If everyone would be seated, it's time to call the city council to order on Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, here in the council chambers. I'd like to explain that if we would happen to have a disaster, if it's a tornado, we go to the basement across where you pay for your sewer bills, and if it would be a fire, we would go out orderly through the exit door. And since the meetings are being videotaped, it is important that everyone speak directly into the microphone when speaking. So Jenny, would you call, roll call of alderperson?
Alderperson Whitaker?
Here.
Alderperson Schneider?
Here.
Alderperson Duco?
Here.
Alderperson Eris? Alderperson Randall?
Here.
Alderperson Ferguson?
Here.
Alderperson Anthony?
Here.
Alderperson Ovian?
Here.
Alderperson Dillman?
Here.
Alderperson Schaefer?
Here.
Alderperson Steele? Alderperson Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderperson Elmore?
Here.
Alderperson Weigant?
Here.
Alderperson Sullivan?
Here.
Alderperson Ostoff?
Here.
Mayor, Eris and Steele are excused.
Okay. A department head roll call?
City Treasurer Bierman?
Here.
City Attorney Horner?
Present.
Police Chief Matt Icecant?
Here.
Fire Chief Stephanie Mills?
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitreit? Director of Public Works Jason Poole? Director of Race Water Randy Smith?
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman?
Here.
Director of IT Ty Buckner?
Here.
City Engineer Scott Sager?
Here.
Director of Health Housing Building Scott Tyler?
Director of Economic Development Cliff Cross?
Present.
Director of Human Resources Bill Clay? Director of Maintenance Mike Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor, Jamie, Jason, Scott Tyler, Bill Clay are excused, and Craig Maui is here for Jason Poole.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, there's no public hearing, but public participation, I'd like to remind everyone, it's two to three minutes per person, and raise your hand if you're here for public participation. Yes, would you please come forward, state your name and your, this lady, ma'am, if you would please come forward and state your name and address and what's your, as part of your public participation.
Anna Maddox, twelve fifty Shiloh Station Road. I'm here for the, uh, motion of barla at the property of the old Shotsey Building.
Okay. Could you tell us what number it is, like seven A, seven B?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Okay. You want to state your concern or anything?
Our current concern is, well, we're in favor of a business going in. Our concern is if the business will have adequate adequate parking to support it. That's our concern.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yes, come forward, please, state your name and address.
My name is Patrick. I live off Wabash. I'm here today as a concerned citizen. Current U.S. foreign policy provides direct aid to a regime that is committing crimes against humanity towards the Palestinian people. These crimes are bankrolled by tax dollars.
Point of honor.
And can also
Point of order, Your Honor.
Be supported by investments of municipal funds and businesses that support or benefit from Israeli genocide. This is an unacceptable transaction.
Sir, if we could keep it to the agenda?
This is
Our city business?
This is, this is a part of the agenda. It's municipal funds investment, right?
The Treasurers, okay.
Okay.
Additionally, the city needs to review its procurement policies to indicate its commitment to ethical standards. Something significant about this city council meeting is how it falls between Memorial Day and Juneteenth. Memorial Day was first started to commemorate fallen soldiers in the Civil War who fought against a vicious oppression in the form of slavery. Juneteenth, to commemorate the freedom that they fought for. Those soldiers and the ones who came after did not die to export the same inequalities that pervaded through Jim Crow. Behavior like this not only needs to be decried at the national level, but also at the state and city level. The beauty of our city and of our United States should not come at the expense of civilians, foreign or domestic. That's why I support the emergency ceasefire resolution being presented here today. I ask this council not to be complicit in genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for public participation? Okay, hearing none?
Stuart's back there, this lady.
Oh, Stuart, come forward, please, with, name and address.
And then this lady. Oh, is there another? There's somebody else that wants to talk.
Stuart Lanner Belleville, Illinois. I used to like Belleville until, I lived in Belleville since nineteen seventy. After about fifteen or twenty years, I found out that if you have a business in Belleville and you're a Republican, the city of Belleville's not going to give you any help at all. They might probably hinder your business.
Let's stick with the agenda this evening.
I got another thing here. I offered to pay sixty thousand dollars to buy this seventy-five millimeter French cannon that's rusting out there at the little diamond, little football devils and put it in the Walden Hill Cemetery by the Vietnam Memorial. And I was, I thought that the Constitution meant something, but the Eighth Amendment was totally violated.
Stuart.
I was charged with a million dollars bond for a nonviolent crime, a million, and the city and the county or somebody's got a hundred thousand of my money.
Stuart, this is not on the agenda this evening?
We had to listen to his tirade about Jews in the Palestine, whatever they are.
Thank you so much.
I'm against the bike trails, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? I believe, yes.
Hello, my name is Chief O'Sonier, and I'm a Green Party candidate for Illinois District thirteen, which covers part of Belleville, if not all of it. I live in Champagne, um, on First Street. So I'm really here to talk about, to share with you, thinking about municipality business, thinking about even the funds. I want to, I want to highlight that there is, part of city business is thinking about where our money goes, and part of our taxes do in fact go to supporting the genocide that happens in Gaza at the current moment. So I do believe that that's city business, and I would like something that you all can discuss and talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Wait, there's more, Mayor.
There's more? Yes.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. My name is Jeffrey Dixon. I stay on twenty-three, I stay at twenty-three zero three Rockwood Drive, Belleville, Illinois. Same as in the, this local government is paying tax dollars to the perpetuation of the genocide that has happened to the Palestinian community. I would like to put forth a resolution, a ceasefire resolution, to end the killings on both sides, because killing, I believe everybody here can agree of humans is wrong in every sense of the word. So with that being said, in this emergency ceasefire resolution, whereas this council condemns violence of any kind and all forms of hate, including racism, Islam phobia, antisemitism, and insists that all people have the right to learn, work, worship, and live free from intimidation, harassment, and fear of violence. And whereas this council has heard from constituents in the city across diverse communities who are calling for peace, who support those who have been killed or injured in the worsening conflict, whose families are experiencing famine and devastation, and who have been personally threatened of fear of violence, and whereas this council condemns the attacks in Israel on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, that led to the loss of Israeli and American lives and taking, in the taking of hundreds of hostages. And whereas this council and Belleville citizens of all faiths and backgrounds have expressed profound concern for the innocent civilian suffering and are alarmed by the loss of tens of thousands of innocent Palestinian American lives due to the war in Gaza. Further, the council calls for the international aid to go immediately and directly to the people of Gaza to help in, to help end the genocide. Whereas the council supports all efforts to resolve the tragic conflict in Gaza and further supports the resolution adopted by the U.N. Security Council that calls for the halt to the fighting in Gaza and for the release of all hostages taken captive on October seventh. And whereas the resolution constitutes an emergency measure for the immediate preservation of public peace, property, health, and safety now and therefore be resolved by this council of the city of Belleville. Section one, that this council condemns all forms of hate discrimination in the city around the world and supports the United Nations Security Council Resolution calling for the halt of the genocide in Gaza. Section two, that the clerk of council is directed to send copies of this resolution to the United States House of Representatives Senator Tammy Duckworth, Governor J.B. Pritzker, and President Joe Biden. Section three, that this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure and provided it receives the affirmative vote from the appropriate number of members elected to council. It shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon this adoption and approval by the mayor. Otherwise, it shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. And section four, that this council commits the reviewing of the city's investment portfolio to ensure that the municipal funds aren't spent on businesses that support or benefit the existing apartheid regimen in Israel and will begin a process of changing its procurement policies to reflect a dissolved, disembowe in companies or organizations that support or benefit from crimes against humanity.
And with that being said
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I would like to say that the lives that has been lost in Gaza is forty thousand plus. In Belleville, we are just over forty thousand plus citizens. That is every citizen in Belleville that has been killed. So Mayor, when I ran against you respectively, as you won against Mayor, you said out of your mouth that you respect and you believe in the racial and social justice efforts and advocacy that I was pushing for, which includes human rights. The killings of, the killing of forty thousand plus people, men, women, and children, is wrong on every level. And if I would have been Mayor, this is a resolution
Yeah.
That I would have passed and made sure
Thank you so much.
That we weren't complicit in any form of genocide.
It's been more than three minutes for public participation.
Or apartheid in Israel.
Thank you.
So please do the right thing and stand on the right side of history as we submit this resolution for the Belleville Council to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'd like to do, we have presentations, recognitions, and appointments. So at this time, I'd like to read a proclamation in recognition of Juneteenth. Whereas on January first, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, setting in motion the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas on April ninth, eighteen sixty-five, the Civil War ended with the surrender of General Robert E. Lee at the Appomattox, oh, I always pronounce this wrong, help me, thank you.
Appomattox.
Appomattox Courthouse. And whereas this news reached the state of Texas when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston Bay with Union troops. And whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union General Gordon Granger announced, "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free." And whereas Juneteenth became known as the celebration of the end of slavery, which is the oldest known public celebration of the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and celebrates the success gained through education and greater opportunity. And whereas the celebration of Juneteenth reminds each of us of the precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity, which are the core of the American dream. And now therefore I, Patty Gregory, Mayor of the city of Belleville, Illinois, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as a day to celebrate Juneteenth, and urge all citizens to join in this celebration. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the city of Belleville to be affixed this seventeenth day of June in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you. And this will be on our Welcome to Belleville Facebook page for everyone to read. Okay, now we will have a presentation by Larry Betts, Belleville Historical Society, of two inductees, Otto Rubeck and Theodore Gunlock, to the Walk of Fame in motion to accept new inductees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Promise to be good tonight. In two thousand and fourteen, the bicentennial year of the city of Belleville, we started the Walk of Fame. We add two to three members every even number year. This being an even number year, we're putting forth two gentlemen that we want you to consider for approval to be put in that Walk of Fame. It's on the northwest quadrant of the square. If you've never seen it, we invite you. The first inductee, we hope, is Otto W. Rubeck, born eighteen seventy-four, died nineteen fifty-four. He was a homegrown architect, grew up on West Washington Street. As a Belleville architect for over forty years, Rubeck shaped the cityscape of his hometown. He's sometimes, in collaboration with partners, designed buildings in a variety of architectural styles. His list of civic buildings include Belleville Carnegie Library, additions to the old Sinclair County Courthouse, engine, excuse me, Engine House Number Three on West Main, and the nineteen-eleven Belleville Post Office, and about half of downtown buildings. Most every public school constructed in Belleville during the nineteen-ten's through the nineteen-thirties, including the original campus of Belleville Township High School, bore Rubeck's name. Commercial buildings on Main Street included the commercial building, Belleville Savings Bank, Saint Clair National Bank, and Belleville Shoe. His numerous residents include homes of Peter Felner, Herman Wongland, and Jay Haynes, submitted by the Belleville Historical Society. The second potential inductee is Theodore J. Gunlock, born eighteen ninety-two, died nineteen eighty-one. Theodore was an industrialist squared. Born on a farm near Belleville, Gunlock in nineteen twenty-three established the T.J. Gunlock Machine Company, a general machine shop and welding firm first known for automobile engine repair. By the nineteen-forties, the company was exporting machinery worldwide. In nineteen forty-eight, Gunlock invented a rock crusher that could reduce coal chunks to uniform size suitable for use in new automatic coal feeders. Generations of rock crushers since have used that technology that has made Gunlock a leading name internationally. Gunlock established the J.M.J. Products Company to manufacture four and wall tile cutters in nineteen forty-six. It became the first in the nation to hold an election to select a union bargaining agent under the Taft-Hartley Act of nineteen forty-seven. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'd like a motion to approve new inductees to the Walk of Fame.
Schneider.
Thank you.
Schaefer.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for bringing that forward. I need a motion now to approve the city council meeting minutes of June third, two thousand and twenty-four.
Schneider.
Thank you.
Schaefer.
Any discussion on the council meeting minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I now need claims, payroll, and dispersments, a motion to approve claims and dispersments in the amount of one million, eighteen thousand, two hundred and six dollars and thirty-two cents, and payroll in the amount of one million, sixty thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Whitaker, some.
Schneider.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call?
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. No reports this evening, so we'll start with oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. Eleven A, motion from administration, motion to approve the First Amendment to lease, name change from T-Mobile USA Tower LLC to Crown Castle Towers LLC for cellular tower located at eight oh one Royal Heights Road.
Schneider.
Schaefer.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call?
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And now, would alderperson Whitaker give the motions from finance?
Any objections to reading them, Mr. Group?
No.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, eleven B one, a motion to approve an agreement with Verizon Wireless to provide city cellphone services. Eleven B two, a motion to approve contract renewal with Marzam postage meter rental, City Hall, in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars per month for July first, two thousand and twenty-four, through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-nine. Eleven B three, motion to waive formal bidding procedures and purchase one twenty-twenty-four Ford F-four-fifty flatbed truck for the Street Department in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. One twenty-twenty-four Ford F-one-fifty pickup truck for the Street Department in the amount of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. And one twenty-twenty-four Ford F-two-fifty pickup truck for the Cemetery Department in the amount of forty-six thousand dollars from Broadway Ford for a total cost of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, matching the Illinois State bid price. Eleven B four, a motion to waive formal bidding procedures and utilize the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Alliance to purchase one new Verza Lift insulated forty-foot telescopic aerial platform lift on an international CV chassis from Verza Lift in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and four dollars for the Street Department. And eleven B five, a motion to waive formal bidding procedures and utilize the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Alliance to purchase one new mini excavator from Clark Equipment Company doing business as Bobcat Company in the amount of ninety-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-six cents for the Street Department. So moved on all. Rob, five seconds.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call?
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now, alderperson Anthony, motions from police and fire?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two motions here. Any objection to reading them, Mr. Group?
No.
Okay. Eleven C one, motion to approve Illinois Attorney General's retail theft grant purchases. Purchase of LPR, that's license plate readers and cameras for high retail areas with ultra with utility in the amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. That would be taken for grants and forfeiture funds. Eleven C two, motion to approve a contract with Beland Solutions LLC in the amount of two thousand nine hundred dollars of counseling services. That would also be taken from grant funds. So moved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none? Roll call?
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now, alderperson Anthony, motions from police and fire?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two motions here. Any objection to reading them, Mr. Group?
No.
Okay. Eleven C one, motion to approve Illinois Attorney General's retail theft grant purchases. Purchase of LPR, that's license plate readers and cameras for high retail areas with ultra with utility in the amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. That would be taken for grants and forfeiture funds. Eleven C two, motion to approve a contract with Beland Solutions LLC in the amount of two thousand nine hundred dollars of counseling services. That would also be taken from grant funds. So moved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none? Roll call?
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Thank you. And now from Economic Development and Annexation, Alder Person Ostov?
Is there any objection to reading these together? Okay. Eleven D one, motion to accept the TIFF redevelopment plan and approve sending the TIFF redevelopment plan to all affected tax and districts and placing on file. Eleven D two, motion to approve a feasibility study on the designation of areas as redevelopment project areas. Eleven D three, motion authorizing the establishment of tax increment financing interested parties registries and adopting registration rules for these registries. So moved.
Shaffer, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostov.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. And now, Jenny, motions from Zoning Board of Appeals.
Together, separate, what? Together?
Together.
Okay. Get ready. Eleven E one, fifteen April twenty-four, Visions LLC David Jox, request from a- request for a use variance to establish and operate a behavioral consultation health services clinic at the property commonly known as fifty-eight oh one Mount Pleasant Lane, zero eight zero six zero four zero 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 six four, located in an eight-two-two family residence district, applicable section of the zoning code one six two point one six three, one six two point five seven zero, Ward four. Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval with a vote of six to zero. Eleven E two, twenty-three May twenty-four, Felipe Belimalaga Casa Maria Catering LLC requests for a special use permit for a Class A liquor license at nineteen twenty-six West Main Street, zero eight two zero zero four zero two zero zero three, located in the C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight, one six two point five one five, Ward two. Zoning Board of Appeals recommend approval with a vote of six to zero. Eleven E three, twenty-four May twenty-four, Los Amigos Seven Inc. requests for a special use permit for a Class B liquor license at twenty-six thirty, Muskota Avenue, zero nine three zero zero one 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 zero zero three, located in the C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight, one six two point five one five, Ward seven. Zoning Board of Appeals recommend approval in the name of the applicant only with a vote of six to zero. Eleven E four, twenty-six May twenty-four, Carolyn Brewer Dasbrat LLC Thomas Brewer requests for a special use permit to operate an Airbnb at four thirteen East Washington Street, zero eight two two zero three four one zero one six, located in the C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the city and zoning code three four point zero four three, one five four point one five, one five four point four six, one five four point four nine, one six two point two four eight, one six two point five one five, Ward six. Zoning Board of Appeals recommend approval with a vote of six to zero. Eleven E five, twenty-eight May twenty-four, Felipe Belimalaga Casa Maria Catering LLC requests for a special use permit for outdoor dining seating at nineteen twenty-six West Main, zero eight two zero zero four zero two zero zero three, located in the C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the city and zoning code one one eight point zero one, one six two point two four eight, one six two point four zero zero, one six two point five one five, Ward two. Zoning Board of Appeals recommend approval with a vote of six to zero. Eleven E six, twenty-nine May twenty-four, Vancada Esbarla requests for a map amendment to rezone the property commonly known as twenty-three oh one East Main Street, zero eight two three zero one one four zero two eight, from A one single family residence district to C two heavy commercial, applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point five nine zero, Ward seven. Zoning Board of Appeals recommend approval with a vote of six to zero. Eleven E seven, thirty May twenty-four, Vancada Esbarla requests for a special use permit for a Class B liquor license at twenty-three oh one East Main Street, zero eight two three zero one one four zero two eight, located in the C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight, one six two point five one five, Ward seven. Zoning Board of Appeals recommend approval in the name of the applicant only with a vote of six to zero. Eleven E eight, thirty-one May twenty-four, Vancada Esbarla requests for a special use permit for outdoor dining seating at twenty-three oh one East Main Street, zero eight two three zero one one four zero two eight, located in the C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the city and zoning code one one eight point zero one, one six two point two four eight, one six two point four zero zero, one six two point five one five, Ward seven. Zoning Board of Appeals recommend approval with a vote of six to zero.
Shaffer, so moved.
Thank you.
Second with comments.
Second with comments?
Yeah. Kevin, I just wanted to throw something in on the six, seven, eight. The folks that spoke this evening are anxious to speak to the owners since they are the abutting properties, and they would like to open up some conversation about what was previously worked out with the Schatzes and parking law. And they're open, they're not saying yes or no, they're just open to discussion. So I hope the Barlas, if they're here tonight or economic development, can let these folks know, and we can put them in touch with each other. And we've had no, Dennis and I have had no objection to this, nobody spoken against it at zoning, and the only question is, you know, it's gonna take a lot to bring this property back to life, but it could be a good thing.
Okay. Any more discussion? Yes?
Here, I didn't catch this, but I have one question. At the location in LE five, request for outdoor dining at nineteen twenty-six West Main Street, are they gonna have to require a bump out? Because I don't know if it's gonna be on, in the back of the property or the front of the property.
Cliff?
So, this is on. Hear me?
Yes.
So this actually came up during the ZBA case. So you notice it's out of chronological order, it's down the way a little bit from their actual liquor license request. When, when this application was accepted for the liquor license by the staff, we looked at the proposal for the outdoor dining. When you look at outdoor dining, the way the ordinance is currently written, it talks about the need for the special use permit when you have it in a public right-of-way or in a public space. This is technically proposed to go the rear of the property. So because of the potential of the dining outside in the rear of the property, and even though they were not required to do that, we like to bring that before the ZBA so the neighbors can provide public comment as part of that process. It's really overkill. So the short answer is, this is actually going to go to the rear of the property. We also talked about the potential of something being up front. That's gonna be a tall task in that you're gonna have to provide some sort of ballards or protection up front there, and you would have to provide a stubout. As you talk about, I just don't know if it's feasible there. If it comes to that point, we will evaluate it and potentially bring that back to discuss that, but this really is an overkill to make sure they can have that, a couple tables out back. And just while we were coming before you as part of the public hearing process, we wanted to give the neighbors any public input that they wanted to do at that point. So this really is, it's going to the rear.
May I ask just a follow-up question? How does that affect their parking back there? Because that's where most-
Well, we talked about that too. So strategically, we have to evaluate that. We made it very clear, if it takes any of their required parking away, then they cannot have it in the rear. So that'll be reviewed as part of the administrative review process. I also talked about this during the ZBA case. I really am not a fan how our outdoor dining provisions are written. I'm gonna reevaluate it and redo it. I'm gonna propose to do it like we did at University City. At University City, here, our outdoor dining, really in that provision of the code, was really designed for one place and one place only, really the downtown, right? As you walk up and downtown, up and down the sidewalk, you wanna make sure you meet the separation requirements so you don't have any ADA issues. So I would almost like to make an area where outdoor dining is a given upon the issuance of an annual permit. In other words, every business has to come in every year and pay the twenty-five-dollar permit fee, show the layout so we can ensure the ADA requirements are being met, and we don't get a visit from the Attorney General's office. I think that's really the intent of that. And, and then also, we've also addressed it, in these private businesses that are gonna have outdoor dining in the rear, most of them are bars and places like that, we require a special use permit now. We did an amendment that requires any outdoor establishment with onsite accessory outdoor operations to go through the SUP process as well. That's another reason why we did this, because it came after the fact. So it's really to make sure we don't get the bands playing at eleven o'clock next to neighborhoods and things like that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none? Uh, all?
No, you can do all in favor.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, Mr. Dittelman, Alderman Person Dittelman, Parks Board motions?
On behalf of the Parks Board, I'd like to make a motion on eleven one, motion to approve facility use agreement with Belleville School District, one eighteen, for the use of various gymnasium and ball fields, twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five. We have another one here. You wanna put that together?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. On eleven dash five, eleven dash F two, motion to approve engineering services with Gonzalez Companies LLC for bicentennial parks fillway bid and constructive services in the amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. TIFF sixteen.
Ferguson. Shaffer.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Sullivan. Aye.
Ostov.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Motions from Streets and Grades, Alder Person Randall?
Thank you, Mayor. Folks, any objection to reading them together?
No.
Nope. Okay, hearing none. Eleven G one is a motion to modify Oats Associates existing work, quarter twenty-four, have a West Main Street resurfacing, twenty eighth Street, Forty Fourth Street, to now include Forty Fourth Street to Forty Ninth Street street resurfacing for an additional amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Upon approval of these additional services, the contract will increase to a total of four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, TIFF three funds. Eleven G two, motion to approve Brightway Traffic Control Inc., lowest responsible bidder in the amount of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, sixteen cents for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five striking motor fuel fax and TIFF funds. Eleven G three is a motion to enter into an agreement with Gonzalez Companies in the amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars to repair plans for the proposed pump station at Dewey Detention Basin, TIFF twelve funds. Eleven G four is a motion to enter in an agreement with Oats Associates in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred dollars for preparing and submitting a SS four A planning grant application for West Main Street from Frank Scott Parkway to the city limits, Illinois one fifty-seven, TIFF three funds, so moved.
Ferguson.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call?
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostov.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Jenny, Labor Day and parade and picnic and some other things?
I can read together, yes.
Yes.
Twelve A, Labor Day picnic, nine two, twenty twenty-four, request from Southwestern Illinois Central Labor, Labor Council to host Labor Day picnic Monday, September second, twenty twenty-four, ten a.m. to four p.m. Huff Park, additional city services, police personnel, trash toders, picnic tables, electric and signage. Twelve B, Labor Day parade, nine two, twenty twenty-four, request from Southwestern Illinois Central Labor Council to host Labor Day parade Monday, September second, twenty twenty-four, ten a.m. to twelve thirty p.m. Street closure request, South First Street from West Washington, South Side to West Monroe, North Side, and South Second Street from West Washington, South Side to West Monroe, North Side, includes cross streets in between eight a.m. to twelve thirty p.m. Parade route rolling closure, ten a.m. to twelve p.m. Additional services, public works and police personnel cleanup and barricades. Twelve C, back-to-school vendor pop-up, eight ten, twenty twenty-four, request from Sawdust and Glitter to host back-to-school vendor pop-ups Saturday, August tenth, twenty twenty-four, ten a.m. to seven p.m. Use of southeast quadrant of Public Square, no additional services. Twelve D, Main Street Marathon banner, request from Belleville Main Street Marathon to place a banner across North Illinois Street in June, July, as available.
Shaffer, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. No petitions this evening, and now we'll start with resolutions. Motion to read by title only, resolutions thirty-five fourteen and thirty-five fifteen.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Jenny?
Together, correct?
Yes.
Fourteen A, resolution thirty-five fourteen, a resolution providing for a feasibility study on the designation of areas as redevelopment project areas. Fourteen B, resolution thirty-five fifteen, resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route one fifty-nine for the Labor Day Parade Monday, September second, twenty twenty-four.
Shaffer, so moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call?
Dittelman.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostov.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Under ordinances, I need a motion to read by title only, ordinances ninety-two eighty-four, ninety-two eighty-five, ninety-two eighty-six, ninety-two eighty-seven, ninety-two eighty-eight, ninety-two eighty-nine, ninety-two ninety, ninety-two ninety-one, and ninety-two ninety-two.
Randall, so moved. Shaffer, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Jenny?
I can read them all together, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Fifteen A, ordinance ninety-two eighty-four, twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the city of Belleville, Illinois, authorizing the establishment of tax increment financing interested parties, registries, and adopting registration rules for these registries. Fifteen B, ordinance ninety-two eighty-five, twenty twenty-four, a zoning ordinance in regards to case fifteen, April twenty-four, Visions LLC David Jox. Fifteen C, ordinance ninety-two eighty-six, twenty twenty-four, a zoning ordinance in regards to case twenty-three, May twenty-four, Felipe Belimalaga Casa Maria Catering LLC. Fifteen D, ordinance ninety-two eighty-seven, twenty twenty-four, a zoning ordinance in regards to case twenty-four, May twenty-four, Los Amigos Seven Incorporated. Fifteen E, ordinance ninety-two eighty-eight, twenty twenty-four, a zoning ordinance in regards to case twenty-six, May twenty-four, Carolyn Brewer Dasbrat LLC Thomas Brewer. Fifteen F, ordinance ninety-two eighty-nine, twenty twenty-four, a zoning ordinance in regards to case twenty-eight, May twenty-four, Felipe Belimalaga Casa Maria Catering LLC. Fifteen G, ordinance ninety-two ninety, twenty twenty-four, a zoning ordinance in regards to case twenty-nine, May twenty-four, Vancada Esbarla. Fifteen H, ordinance ninety-two ninety-one, twenty twenty-four, a zoning ordinance in regards to case thirty, May twenty-four, Vancada Esbarla. Fifteen I, ordinance ninety-two ninety-two, twenty twenty-four, a zoning ordinance in regards to case thirty-one, May twenty-four, Vancada Esbarla.
Shaffer, so moved. Whitaker, second.
Okay. It's been, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Nope, I need a roll call.
Oh, roll call?
Shaffer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostov.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.